Had a chance to uh maybe grab a cup of tea or something. And let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's one twenty-four. This is the October fourth, Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District. Work session board meeting. So just a reminder, this isn't a voting meeting. This is a work session for us to exchange information, hear from presenters, ask questions, et cetera, et cetera. Wendy, can we do a roll call?
Yes, I'm Nancy Hendrickson.
I'm here.
Steve Fancher.
Here.
Eric Mueller.
Here.
Dave Ripma.
Here.
Seth Reeser.
Here.
Ashton Simpson.
Here.
Lori Stegman indicated she would not be able to attend Emerald Bog. I think Emerald is in the same situation.
Emerald is out of town. This is Alex Harfman Park.
Thanks for clarifying, Alex. And Corky Collier.
Here.
Rochelle Altman.
Here.
Mary Helen Kincaid.
Here.
Tammy Stephenson.
And Tammy had shared that he might be late, so.
Got it. Thank you. Eric Molander. Eric was on earlier. Maybe he will come back. Brent Cartwright.
Here.
Ed Washington. Do not see Ed. Bob Salinger. Do not see Bob. Heather King indicated that she was not able to attend. We have ten board members present. This time.
Thank you, Wendy. And welcome. I see Carol's on now, so welcome. And we're gonna jump right into our first topic. And you all got the board packet from Wendy. It's all about the geo bond. At the start here, we get the bond financial presentation with Carol Samuels. I'm gonna turn it over to Lori. Lori?
Thank you. I am just gonna hand it right over to Carol. So Carol is here to talk to us about the financial planning that goes behind the general obligation bonds and just some of the information that we thought would be valuable and helpful for the board members as we start to move forward with our own geo bond. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Carol and she can walk you through the information.
Great. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Before I share my screen, let me also introduce my partner in crime today, Sarah Dickey, who is with Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood and is your bond attorney. Sarah, do you wanna share anything more before we launch?
Uh, just hi, everyone. Happy to be here in place of Golgin today and looking forward to going through geo bonds and answering any questions you may have.
Great. So I am going to share my screen. Lori, I am open to questions as we go. I think that often helps people really understand, but I may not be able to track when people have questions. So do feel free to interrupt either of us and Sarah and I are going to share back and forth on these screens. So let me get this started. I was having some issues here. Okay, can I get a show of somebody's hand that you can see this?
You can see it's not the slideshow itself. It's the slides with the smaller slides to the left.
Let's try putting it on slideshow. Okay, how about now?
Perfect.
That's great.
Alright. Alright, so brief introductions and hopefully for you, this screen does not look really warped. On mine, it looks warped, but I don't know how to fix it, so apologies. But Sarah, why don't you talk about the role of bond counsel and your firm's experience and a little bit about Golgin?
Sure. So hi, everyone. Obviously, I'm not Golgin, who unfortunately was not able to be here today. But my name is Sarah Dickey, as Carol and I introduced ourselves earlier, and I'm an attorney who works closely with Golgin. And we serve as bond counsel to the vast majority of local governments in the state of Oregon, including the folks listed on this slide, Portland, Multnomah County, PPS Gresham, the Port of Portland, Metro, Troutdale, and Wood Village. In fact, I think we serve as bond counsel to maybe all but one of the local governments that's represented on the district's board. So hi to those folks. I see a few friendly faces here. With regard to what we do as bond counsel, we work with issuers all over the state on a daily basis to issue bonds. So we, in that role, we prepare legal documents in connection with the bond issuance. We also provide guidance on federal tax law, excuse me, and securities law. We also provide at the close of each transaction, an opinion that the bonds are validly issued and federally tax exempt, which is something that investors require before purchasing bonds. And before I turn it over to Carol for an introduction, I just wanted to say at the outset, I know Carol said, you know, we welcome questions and we very much do. I also want to say, you know, if Carol or I use any terms or jargon that you're not familiar with, please, you know, ask and we can we can explain. Our practice is focused pretty much exclusively on municipal finance. It's what we do. Every day, we're like living and breathing this stuff and talking about it all the time. So it's very easy for us to kind of slip back into jargon. So if that happens, please, please, please ask questions because we want this to be useful and accessible to everyone. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carol.
Thanks, Sarah. So I work for Piper Sandler and you'll see a lot of overlap in our client lists with the Hawkins Law Firm because we tend to work very closely together. We are on the financial side of the issuance of bonds equation. And we work with the district as your municipal advisor and have a lot of experience both in the metro area as well as across the state. Specifically, how we spend our time is helping you figure out the finances prior, in this case for a general obligation bond, prior to placing the bonds on the ballot. So how much are they likely to cost your taxpayers? What options do you have in terms of repayment term or structure? And how does that affect the costs? Are there ways to set yourself up for future bonding opportunities in your bond structure? We do a lot of iterations and later in this presentation, I have some to show you as a place to get the conversation started. Once you have authorization to move forward, and in this case, authorization from the voters, then our role is to help you actually sell the bonds and get the money. So. Sarah, back to you.
So we're here to talk about bonds and I guess the best place to start is what is a bond? And for us, it's a technical term, meaning an obligation to repay borrowed money. So bonds can take a lot of different forms. For instance, they can be broken up into pieces and sold to multiple investors and that's sort of your classic publicly issued bond. Or they can be sold directly to a bank, like in the form of a bank loan. Each bond will bear a stated rate of interest and have a specific maturity date. And then local, sorry, bonds can be used for to finance all kinds of things. I would say primarily, local governments use them to finance major capital projects that they either don't want to or aren't able to finance or pay for on a pay as you go basis. That's Carol.
Back to me. So here are a couple of statistics about 2022's market issuance. I will say that 2022 was somewhat of an unusual year, but just to give you a flavor of what we see, issuance volumes countrywide was nearly $400 billion. So municipalities across the country are using this vehicle largely to finance capital projects that are too expensive to do on a pay as you go basis. Eighty-one percent of those bonds were sold on a tax exempt basis, meaning that the interest that investors receive is not subject to income tax. In Oregon, it's not subject to state income tax either. So that's kind of a backdoor subsidy, if you will, that the state provides to municipalities in this state to make it more affordable because when it's exempt from tax, it causes the interest rate to go down. So it makes it cheaper. And in 2022, the largest issuers of debt were in the education sector. I would say that's fairly consistent. But you can also see big slices for general purpose, transportation, healthcare, et cetera. And 2022, unfortunately, was a year where I'm sure you all saw this in your personal finance where interest rates did this. And unfortunately, 2023 has just been more of the theme. So we did a lot of what were called new money transactions as contrasted to refinancings, which in this case were very minimal. Back in 2021, when interest rates were quite, quite low, in fact, had hit the lowest part of where we've been in 25 years, there were far, far more refinancings. And again, my guess is you experienced that kind of surge in your own personal life if you refinanced your mortgage in the past five years or so. Other key statistics, who issues bonds? Well, there are 60,000 issuers across the country. It's not an unusual thing to do. All 50 states have issuers or state authorities. And in fact, state authorities are by far the largest entity across the country issuing bonds. That's a little misleading though, because in some states, local governments are not allowed to issue bonds and the state will issue on their behalf. In Oregon, it's much more focused on the local government level. So you'll see school districts, cities, counties, special districts, and the state of Oregon issuing bonds. More on Oregon again in 2022. In terms of security type, i.e. what was the repayment of bonds in 2022? The bulk you can see in this blue pie, about 27% were general obligation bonds. 2022 was actually an unusual year. Most years, it's actually higher than that in Oregon. But about $1 billion or about the same amount were issued as revenue bonds in 2022, largely driven by Port of Portland had major bond issuance as did the city of Portland. And I believe there are representatives on this Zoom meeting from each of those jurisdictions and no doubt you're familiar with that. Issuer type in Oregon, schools are a big portion, just like on the national market, about 27% of total issuance in 2022 were by schools. Cities were about 20% and ports in 2022 made up about 20% as well. So again, the bulk of that was the Port of Portland. Who buys bonds? Well, you'll see a lot of purple here and all of the purple refers to individuals, what we call retail or entities that are buying on behalf of individuals like mutual funds or money managers or trust departments. Why? Because the tax exemption, and again, in Oregon, this is even a bigger deal because it's double tax exempt, is very meaningful to individuals. Now, in order to take advantage of the tax exemption, you have to be a high net worth individual because you want to be in the highest tax bracket in order to take advantage of the tax exemption. But you will see over and over again that what moves the market more than any other buying segment are those that are buying on behalf of individuals who are looking to diversify their own investments, say, away from stocks, which tend to be riskier. But in addition, you'll see insurance companies, banks, arbitrages, pension funds, and even municipalities will buy from other municipalities because these bonds are powerful. They pay competitive interest rates and they're also very, very safe. I think it's back to Sarah.
So that was a general overview of bonds and how they work. We're now going to focus on a specific type of bond that I know you all are familiar with, which is general obligation bonds. These are bonds, so they're obligations to repay borrowed monies that are secured by an additional constitutionally dedicated property tax. So specifically, that means that the debt service on the bonds, the principal and interest payments are secured by a property tax levied on all property within the district's boundary. And they're also secured by the issuer's full faith and credit, which is essentially a promise to pay from all legally available funds. So the pledge of the property tax revenues for a general obligation bond is unlimited. And that means that the levy rate can go as high as it needs to go to generate revenues needed to pay debt service on the bonds. The funds received from that levy are dedicated, meaning that they can only be used to pay debt service on the bonds. They can't be used for any other purpose. So because general obligation bonds are secured by this additional dedicated property tax levy, they are the most secure form of municipal bonds and therefore they come with the lowest interest rate. And as you all know, from your planning, because issuers are allowed to levy this additional unlimited property tax for payment of the debt service on general obligation bonds, they're required to seek voter approval for those bonds. Carol, can you turn to the next slide? Okay. So the Oregon Constitution places a number of restrictions on how general obligation bond proceeds can be used. And before I go over those restrictions, I should note that these restrictions apply both to the proceeds of the bonds and also to any interest income that's earned on those proceeds. So first, proceeds must be used for capital costs, which is defined in the Constitution to mean the cost of land and other assets with a useful life of more than one year. So that's the first restriction. The second restriction is that the proceeds can only be used for projects that are described in the ballot title. So that means that it's important when you're drafting your ballot title to make sure that the ballot, the language in the ballot title is broad enough to describe all the potential projects that might be financed with general obligation bond proceeds. And finally, the weighted average life of the bonds may not exceed the weighted average life of the projects. It's Carol. I think that's you.
Okay, let me just pause here before we start talking about math and see if there are any questions.
I have a question. And I'm one of the people that has no experience with GL bonds, except that I pay them or not GL bonds, but I pay taxes. So my question is, is there ever any case where bonds aren't sold or sold for less than what the need is? And how does that happen? Or and if that's not easy answer, I'm more than willing to wait till another day for somebody to answer.
So let me take a stab at that, making sure I'm understanding the question. Are you asking, is there ever a time where there is insufficient demand for a bond sale and it ends up not generating the kind of revenue that the issuer is expecting?
Yeah, sort of. I mean, when I hear sale, it's like, if nobody buys it, what happens? Or does that ever happen? Or is that very unrealistic? Or if somebody, we want, what I'm gonna, I don't know, I'll just make up a number, $20 million and somebody says, I'll pay you $15 million. How does that happen or get handled? Or do you just keep issuing bonds to collect more money?
So good question. I would say theoretically, there is always that risk. I've been doing this for thirty-six years now. And the only time in my memory that we actually had to cancel a sale and postpone it was on September 11th. Which I'm sure you can appreciate was such a shock to the system that we had to take a bond. It was scheduled school district general obligation bond for Dallas School District. I remember it vividly. I got a phone call at 5:00 AM from my underwriter who is responsible for selling bonds and he told me to turn on the TV and that we were canceling the sale. Beyond that kind of catastrophic circumstance, which by the way, we had to delay the sale a couple of weeks, then Dallas got their money. I have never experienced a situation where a jurisdiction was unable to sell bonds, particularly one that has a high credit rating. And we will talk about what goes into that in a couple of slides.
Okay, I mean, and it's just, I'm at ground zero with, you know, when you say you're gonna sell some and nobody buys it. It turns into a used car lot kind of thing. So thank you very much. That helped a lot.
Carol, can you talk about a situation where maybe a certain tranche of the bonds doesn't sell and what the underwriters' involvement might be in that?
So in a bond sale, you often hire a firm to sell the bonds on your behalf through what's called a negotiated sale. In that circumstance, you might have a situation where, say, you're selling $100 million worth of bonds. And at the end of a designated order period, and order periods usually last, say, two hours. Actually, municipal bonds sell very fast. So two hours sometimes is longer than what you need, but say at the end of the two hour period, only 80% of the bonds have orders associated with it. Often, what happens is you enter into negotiations with the financial firm and as your municipal advisor, we would help you with those negotiations to have them buy the entire set of bonds from you and take the 20% unsold into their inventory in order to sell over the course of that day or the next couple of days. That is not an unusual circumstance.
Thank you. Nancy, I think you're next.
Yeah, just on the last slide, I was hoping also neophyte to bonds. I I spend that money, but I don't negotiate anything. So is this a correct understanding? The weighted average life of bonds may not exceed the weighted average life of projects means that projects over time have a certain value and the bond value can't be more than that. Is that right? Or does it mean something different?
It's slightly different. So usually once we have like final pricing numbers, Piper or the underwriter will calculate the weighted average life of the bonds, which has to do with Carol, you can speak to this more than I can, but you know, they weight it for the amount of principal that's due each year and that sort of thing. And they calculate a life of the bonds. So say that it's 10 years. And then you compare that to how the average life, how long you expect the project to be around for and useful for, sort of like a useful life of the project type of thing. And so really, the key there is that you don't want to be borrowing money where you're gonna keep paying for the bonds even after the project is no longer useful or worthwhile. You know, you don't want to have that situation occur. And so that's sort of the purpose of the restriction.
Then a simple way of saying it be the pump you buy with the bond revenue should last longer than it takes for you to pay off the bond.
Exactly. That's it.
That is it, Jim. But what I would add to that is that this is an average that pertains to the entire basket of stuff that you're financing. So if your pump, say, has a five-year life, but you're also putting in a major jetty that has a 50-year life, there is absolutely no issue with having a financing that's 20 or even 30 years because the weighted average tends to lean more towards the most expensive, longest-lived items. Does that make sense? Okay. Let's do some math. And I promise if there are any in the audience who anytime you see numbers, you go, I I don't get this. I promise this is very straightforward, arithmetic, but I like going over it because I often find, particularly with general obligation bonds, that when it comes time to describing the impact to taxpayers, people use expressions that are not accurate and I'd like to nip that in the bud right away. So hopefully, this all makes good sense. So what happens when you sell a general obligation bond? On the day you sell those bonds, we, as your financial consultant, will give you a schedule of bond payments that is fixed and knowable. Fixed because you will have a fixed interest rate. So variable rate obligations are not used for general obligation bonds, but also fixed because you will know on day one, just like you know with your mortgage, if you don't refinance it, here's what you're going to have to pay over the period of time until repayment. Once that's known, Lori, in her capacity as your CFO, will take the amount that is due the following fiscal year and submit it to the county assessor. And she will say to the county assessor, this is the amount I need you to levy against the tax base for the district in order to generate sufficient cash to pay the bondholders. Okay, that is due by July 15th. Okay, that is due by July 15th to the county. Okay? However, because some don't pay their taxes, most eventually pay their taxes, but there is a delinquency rate that sometimes means that it takes them a while to pay their taxes. And the Oregon set of laws that govern this recognizes that you don't want to be short and have to borrow from your operating dollars in order to make the debt service payment. The constitution allows Lori to submit an amount that is grossed up for anticipated delinquencies. As Sarah said, when you collect this extra tax, you can only use it to pay debt service. So even if you collect, say, 5% more than you need, if you don't need it, it will just reduce taxes in the future because that's the only you can use it for. Okay, so what then happens after Lori submits the amount of debt that's due plus a little cushion, is that the county calculates what your property value is and divides. So let me give you an example, a graphic. First, Lori submits debt service due plus an amount for delinquencies. And then the county calculates what your taxable assessed value is. And divides by that amount. And then divides again by a thousand to get a bond levy rate per thousand dollars. That is often how the tax cost in any ballot measure that you may have seen for a general obligation bond, say, for Portland Public Schools or the Multnomah County Library. There is an estimate of what the dollars per thousand is going to be. And that's what this number represents. However, this number cannot be guaranteed. You are not asking the voters to approve a rate because we can't know what the rate is because we don't know what the denominator is. All we know is the numerator. Let me give you an example. Say you have a debt service payment due, principal and interest next year of $950,000. In order to have a cushion for delinquencies, you add 50,000 so that your debt service levied is a million dollars. Let's further say, to keep the numbers easy, that your assessed value is 1 billion. What is 1 million divided by 1 billion divided by 1,000? Comes to $1 per thousand dollars of assessed value. Okay, lots of $1 with zeros added on. What does this mean actually in English? What it means is that if you have a property with an assessed value of $100,000, $1 per thousand is $100 per year. If you have a property with an assessed value of $500,000, which is probably closer to the average, that's $500 for you. Okay, so let's say I give you an estimate of $1 per thousand, but next year, your assessed value doubles. What happens? Well, no one expects assessed values to double. That would be a dramatic increase in your value. But if it happened, if your debt service is fixed at a million dollars, what changes is the rate. That is a happy circumstance, obviously. But what if in the third year, your assessed value goes down to 500 million? What happens here? Uh-oh. Now, do I think any of these extreme examples are going to happen? Absolutely not, short of the Cascadia subduction zone. But we have seen circumstances, particularly recently with wildfire issues, where certain communities, Phoenix Talent, for example, down in Southern Oregon, had a dramatic awful wildfire that decimated, lost about 20% of their assessed value in one year. Did that cause their rate to go up? You bet it did. So what I would advise all of you, if you take nothing else away from this slide, when you are describing the impact of a bond on your neighbors, just make sure to use the word estimated or projected because you cannot guarantee what any property tax rate will be. Okay, enough of math.
Can I ask a question here? Because I'm one that, um, historically could win an award for a number of times that I've asked this because my neighbors ask, what's it gonna cost me? And I consistently, every MCDD staff person has heard me say, what's it gonna cost? And I have said, call MCDD, I, I, you know. But that seems to be, um, the number one thing that comes out of anybody's mouth, whether they're in my neighborhood in a public meeting. And so this was like aha moment for me, but estimated or projected. But who makes that estimate or projection? And how do you communicate that so that they say? Because some of the public information systems, they'd say nominal amount or not very much. And with your example, it could be a lot very much. I mean, you know, so I, I guess, how would you answer that question? If your neighbors who are not as well educated and able to explain it as you are, me, gets asked that question?
So also, an excellent question. Thank you for asking. In addition to hedging, whenever you discuss about estimates, you should also feel fairly good about the estimates that you provide. Because what we base the estimates on are very conservative assumptions, both about what the numerator will be. And the numerator is determined based on what? Borrowed amount and interest rates. And honestly, I am going to show you some estimates for your potential borrowing that have very conservative assumptions about where interest rates might be by the time you sell bonds. So that affects the numerator. We are also very conservative about the denominator in terms of taking your current value and assuming how much it might grow from year to year. So we provide estimates for you to use with your public. They are just estimates. And should it turn out that you estimate, say, 20 cents per thousand? And one year it's 25 cents per thousand? You have absolute legal authority to levy that. As Sarah said, these bonds are unlimited as to rate or amount. Largely, that's what drives this being such a bomb-proof investment for all of those investors who want to minimize risk. But in general, our mantra is under-promise and over-deliver. We like it when rates are lower than what we've estimated. Make sense?
Makes a lot of sense. And estimate has entered my vocabulary.
Thank you, you warmed my heart. Okay, any other question before we go back to talking more about words?
I guess one thought I would offer the board is that while anything can happen, typically speaking, the assessed value of Multnomah County will trend upwards. And that will tend to diminish the per household cost. But again, we can't predict the future, but that has certainly been the historic trend. So that should give you a tiny shred of additional comfort.
Okay, um, let's talk now about bond ratings, which are also a crucial part of selling a bond. Particularly one of the size that you are likely to be pursuing. A credit rating is sort of like going to high school and getting a grade that people in all walks of life can understand. So in this case, there are three rating agencies that are commonly sought uh, after in terms of providing their grade. Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. And their grading system starts with the highest possible being a triple A. And it goes down from there. So triple A is the highest, then double A and various intermediate categories within double A, then single A and into the Bs. What this is designed to do is to give investors who may have never heard of the urban district, some guidance, a letter indication of how you compare, say, to a school district in Iowa or a water district in Texas or a city in New Hampshire. They rate everybody on the same scale. The good news about the metro area is that there are multiple jurisdictions, some of whom are on this call, who have the highest triple A rating, including the city of Portland, Multnomah County, Washington County, Clackamas County, and Metro are all rated triple A on their general obligation bond. So that's fantastic. The challenge for you is that as a new district, you don't have the kind of financial track record that your overlapping jurisdictions do have. So I would not anticipate that your district would have the triple A. But depending on how things go with the revenue collection sequence, my hope is that we could get into the double A category. We have a lot of clients who are only in the single A category. That's particularly the case with school districts. And their bond sales also go just fine. Getting back to the earlier question about have we ever had a bond sale not go? We deal with high-quality issuers. And in my estimation, anyone with an A-level rating or above should have no problem selling bonds. The differential comes in terms of the interest rates you receive. So let's talk about what goes into a rating. Um, and take it from there. So on a general obligation bond, there are really three key stats that matter. The first is what's going on with the local economy? How is unemployment? What are income levels? Uh, what is your tax base? The size of your tax base? And if you were to take your tax base and divide by the number of people, value per capita, how does that look? Portland area scores really highly on all of these trends. And that's why many jurisdictions in the area do have elite level ratings. Second category is arguably, and I listed it second, but it's arguably first in how rating agencies are now perceiving ratings. And that's your financial picture. So first, they want to see that they understand what your financing mechanism is. So there are some question marks there for you guys that we would need to work through. Ideally, they'd like to see a track record of collections. And depending on the approach you guys go towards, that ends up on the property tax system, that will be easier to explain. But not necessarily the only approach. And they also want to see trends in how you are at managing your money. So what's been going on with MCDD or the other drainage districts might help inform that. One of the key statistics they look at is what has historically been your reserve level or your fund balance? Third key category is debt statistics. How much do you have, including pension liabilities? And how does that translate into ratios, both on a per capita basis and per property value? How long are you taking to pay it back? And what they anticipate you will need in future debt? Again, in the metro area, because the tax base is so high and the number of people are fairly affluent, tend to score well here. And then the final component is a little softer in terms of there are no, you know, specific guidelines. But they will be interested in the organizational structure and looking at the management, how the board functions, what the experience level is of administrative staff, what the status of your relationships with your employees? Are they in bargaining units? If so, what the contracts look like, and so on. Okay. Sarah, it is your turn.
Great, thanks Carol. So now we're gonna focus a little more on GL bonds for the district and the law that governs district issuance of general obligation bonds, which is covered under ORS 550, which you all may be familiar with. The statutory section where with the general obligation bond authorization is 340. And it permits the district to issue general obligation bonds upon approval of the electors of the district. So with a vote, as you all know. The statute also limits the amount of general obligation bonds that the district can issue to 2% of the real market value of taxable property within the district. And I'm actually going to go into a little bit more detail about that on the next slide. So when the district issue, goes to issue bonds, kind of as Carol touched on with the ratings presentation information, similarly, the district will need to tell its story to investors. It'll need to tell investors about how the district operates and show that it's a stable borrower. And specifically, investors will want to know about the district's revenues and expenses, including how the district generates revenues. So, um, to, and, and the reason for this is that investors will want to see that there's sort of a reliable, tested revenue stream to ensure smooth operation of the district and also ensure that the district's able to operate and maintain any capital projects that are financed with GL bond proceeds. So really, from this perspective, the earlier that a permanent revenue stream is in place, the better. Carol, can you move to the next slide? So I mentioned that debt limit for a general obligation bonds is 2% of So I mentioned that debt limit for a general obligation bonds is two percent of the real market value of the district. So here we have that calculation. You have the real market value at approximately two hundred and two billion. And that calculates, two percent of that calculates to about four billion dollar in general obligation debt capacity. And of course, here, since the district hasn't issued any general obligation bonds yet, the percent of capacity issued is zero. Um, but this is sort of an example of how that debt capacity is calculated and how it would be tracked as the district issues general obligation bonds going forward.
Just to be clear for the board, we're not recommending you issue four billion.
No, it's a very, very high, uh, uh, as you, as you know, it's a high number. And uh, most issuers, you know, other issuers under, with authority under other statutes have similar general obligation debt capacity limitations, and most issuers don't get anywhere near their limit.
Okay. So back to a little more numbers. Um, but I think this is what you have likely been waiting to talk about, which is what are our estimates on how much various bond amounts might cost uh, in your case? So first, I need to talk about interest rates, which, um, yeah, we put this together a couple of weeks ago, and sadly, it's only, uh, gone even more in the wrong direction. But one of the reasons I like this graph is it shows you interest rates both on a taxable, that's the ten year treasury, and a tax exempt. The triple A M M D is a commonly utilized index for highly rated triple A municipal bonds, all the way back to nineteen ninety six. And from that perspective, yes, interest rates went down up until about twenty twenty, and they've been going up ever since. And then even a little more so in the past week or so. Um, but from a historical standpoint, interest rates are still quite low. Um, so that's the good news. I will say, as I said before, we like to under promise. So we, in the numbers I'm about to show you, have then exacerbated this increase by adding even more of a cushion, since your best case is you're not gonna be borrowing until, say, next June after a May election. So we don't know where interest rates are going. We wanna be conservative. And here's what the numbers look like, and I appreciate these are fairly small. Um, but that is actually the main takeaway. Your tax base is so large that even borrowing hundreds of millions of dollars is not going to have a dramatic impact on people's taxes. So dividing this up, first, starting at the top, we're assuming a May twenty twenty four election. And we looked at two different amounts, a hundred and seventy five million and two hundred and twenty five million. And then we looked at these amounts in two different structures. One is what we call a level levy, where to give you the picture, the levy rate is projected, you now all know from now on, we're going to use the word projected, estimated, something like that. Projected to be, on a level levy basis, a whopping fourteen cents per thousand. Translating that into a tax bill, again, if you have a property with a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, that's fourteen dollars per year. Extrapolate from there based upon the assessed value of your personal property. Now I will note, side note, um, how much your property is worth has nothing to do with what its taxable assessed value is. That is a gift, if you will, of measure fifty. And what you all might wanna do tonight is go home and pull out your property tax bill, and you will see there's a line item marked real market value, which is what it sounds like. It purports to be the market value of your house. And then there's a line item that says assessed value. And I live in southeast Portland, and last year, my assessed value was forty nine percent of a market value the county had for my house, and I found that market value insulting because I thought my house is worth more than that. So do be aware that when you're talking about this, don't use your market value as your math. Use your assessed value. But either way, fourteen cents per thousand? If people vote against this, it's not going to be because of the cost. And Nancy, it looks like you have a question.
Thank you. So another remedial question. So if I was looking at my tax bill, as you say, um, or my organizations or whatever, um, does that mean that if my market value matches my assessed value, that I'm not compressed? But if my market value is above my assessed value, then I am compressed? No, Eric's shaking his head no.
Well, that is a really complicated question.
Okay, I withdraw it. Never mind.
Nancy, if you ever wanna meet, I can walk you through that compression calculation.
Okay, great. I'll take you up on that.
So compression doesn't impact geo-bonds first. And second, just so you get a sense of what's happening within our district, we've got an average market value of about two hundred and five thousand. And we've got a median, which is the number right in the middle, of about two forty.
Market value?
No, those are.
Assessed.
Okay.
Um, I have a real life question because I am at home, and I just pulled out my, um, property tax for this year. And so the net R M V um, is the number that I, my neighbors should look at.
No.
And, oh, okay, no. Which one do I, there's market value and then land structure, net R M V, taxable values, net assessed value.
That one.
Okay. Um, well, uh, and, and I live in a development where almost every house is alike. So we, there's single level that are pretty much the same price and double level. So, um, mine says five hundred and two thousand for the net R M V and net assessed at three hundred and two thousand. So if I were gonna explain to me, my neigh- or to my neighbor who has an identical house, it could with that for, I can't do the math in my head, but it'd be the fourteen cents per hundred, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at yours, but it, I'd use that fourteen cents figure times three hundred and two thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
However, however, just to make your head hurt even more, because your house is identical to the house next door, does not, and I wanna underscore, not mean that you have the same assessed value as the house next door. Thank you, measure fifty.
Well, and it depends on when they bought their house of, you, some people with, well, uh, well, some people with identical houses have different amounts, but.
Yes.
Anyway, okay.
And Mary, Mary Helen, just, uh, cuz you said fourteen cents times three hundred two thousand, it would just be fourteen cents times three oh two. Because it's cost a thousand.
Yeah. Oh, I probably misspoke, but, um, and the other thing that I usually say is my dad was a bookkeeper, and he used to always chide me and say, you can't add two plus two and get four every time. So that's my math skill. So, thank you.
About forty two bucks a year.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, it just puts me in a reality sense with what I'm doing in understanding how I can better explain to people with the, um, my new vocabulary of estimate and projected and what they can look at and how, um, say, an absent landowner that's renting the property, how they might react to this, to the, the renter that's living in their house. So, okay, thank you. The, the, this has been very enlightening for me, the non-math, don't know what I'm doing person, so.
Great. Um, so that's a hundred and seventy five million. If you want two hundred and twenty five million with the same levy rate that is projected to stay the same, that will cost you a whopping four cents more than a hundred and seventy five million. We also ran a scenario that is one that has become increasingly popular. Metro has used this for their open space and zoo bonds. Portland Public has used it for their series of bonds, where you build in a step. And just to give you a picture, that is intended to step down sometime in the future. In this case, we selected twenty thirty five for a step down, so roughly ten years after your first issue, which gives you an opportunity, potentially, to go back to the voters the year before, in this case fiscal twenty three, twenty four, and go back on the ballot and fill this in, potentially taking care of future capital needs or current capital needs that you couldn't tackle all at once, maybe without increasing your levy or with only a slight increase in your levy. Obviously, if you wanna borrow the same amount, but have a step down in the future, that's going to cost you a bit more upfront. So rather than being fourteen cents, it starts at seventeen cents for a hundred and seventy five million and then drops to nine. These relationships are fairly arbitrary. We decided a ten year step was a good place to start. If you wanted to have one sooner, you could, but there will be trade offs. The sooner you have the step down, the more it will impact how high the initial rate has to be in order to raise the same amount. There also could be, uh, a change in how deep or shallow the step is. The narrower the step, the less you will raise. Or the lower your upfront rate is, the deeper the step, the higher the initial rate has to be, or that may affect how much you can borrow at a given rate. So again, this is just to give you a flavor of what's possible. And there are numerous combinations. You could have multiple steps. You could have debt that goes down over time. You could even theoretically have debt that goes up over time. Not sure that's recommended from a public policy standpoint, but you have a lot of flexibility based upon what you think best suits your needs. Same mentality, you wanna have a step down in ten years, but you wanna raise two hundred and twenty five million. That will raise the initial rate to twenty two cents, dropping to eleven in twenty thirty five. Note that we have added a two percent cushion. I will say once again, that cushion as of today is probably more like, uh, one point seven percent, given that interest rates have been rising, but there is still a healthy cushion against, hopefully, unnecessary future increases in rates. Okay. So these are all the graphs. And we are now at the end of our formal presentation. So I'm going to stop sharing so you can see my face and open this up for any other questions that might have come up.
So Eric, go for it. Um, Carol, could you, I'm sorry, could you put the slides back up and go back to the page where you've got all the, the numbers? Uh, you know, three or four slides back in there?
You got it, Eric.
Uh, and I, yes, that one, and I guess maybe I'm, I apologize if I missed the explanation earlier. But we've got tax exempt and taxable in the first two lines, and I guess I missed that distinction. So I apologize.
Uh, no apology necessary. I skipped over it and I, mostly because I forgot. Um, given the mix of projects that you may or may not be talking about, uh, we opted, again, hoping to be conservative to show thirty percent or a third of this on a taxable basis, uh, just to cover that being conservative. Um, so because taxable bonds are more expensive, if it turns out that not all of those projects need to be sold on a taxable basis, that would cause the costs to reduce.
The reason why they might be, uh, taxable is because they are taking place on private property despite easements? Or could you explain what triggers taxable v. non-taxable?
Uh, so Jim, I was just about to hand it over to Sarah, who's the expert on the subject.
Yeah, so I will qualify this with, Gogan has been working on this more closely than I have. But I think it's, you're right, private property users, uh, private use can be an issue. And private use, including of, so if you, if there's gonna be federal government use and is included too. So I think our tax partner Jennifer right now has, has information on some of the projects and is working through her analysis. And that will kind of determine the mix of projects. And certainly, we understand, you know, to the extent that we can avoid taxable bonds, uh, we'll try to get there.
And actually, I should note, I misspoke. This isn't a third assumed to be taxable. This is an eighty twenty split. So anyone who was checking my math and said, wait a minute, I was misspeak. Steph, it looked like you had a question.
Yes, sorry. Um, so the, you had a sample rate in there of, um, six and a half. What was the, uh, projected rating of the bonds for the flood safety district?
Uh, I believe we were assuming a double A.
Okay, and, uh, how long does it take to get the bonds rated?
Well, uh, for an established municipality, uh, it generally takes about six weeks to go through the process of being ready to talk to a rating agency and preparing the appropriate documentation and materials. And then you have a conference call or a Zoom meeting presentation with a rating analyst, and then they generally get you the rating within two weeks. Um, for the new district, it may take a bit more time. And part of that really depends on how quickly the pieces, the organizational pieces come together. And I don't know, Lori or Jim, if you wanna talk about that.
I think we've been sharing with the board all along that the sooner we can pin down the revenue model, the better for us. And we know that we won't know for certain until the legislature ends in early March. So, uh, to the degree we can get that pinned down, it will be very helpful to us.
So.
And I guess.
It sounds like, so the legislature is wrapping up on March twelfth. And the election for bonds is May twenty first, which is about nine weeks. So I'm wondering how, whether or not that's realistic to actually be able to get a bond rating before we go out for a vote on the bonds.
And I don't know if you need the rating before you get voter approval. So those, those, the board may direct that, but it's not a requirement. So those, those, the board may direct that, but it's not a requirement of seeking voter approval.
And the other thing that we are looking at is the cash flow, the spending projections for the bonds to make a determination as to whether we can look at a private issuance to get us through the first year so that we have more time to establish the district to be able to get a better rating. So there are some things that we're looking at to make sure that we're reducing the cost as much as we can for the taxpayers.
So the, um, I realize it's not required, but I'm, since the, we have our consultants here. I was, and they've obviously done a large number of bond sales. I'm wondering if they've ever worked on one where the operating revenue model for the district or the underlying agency was still up in the air when a lot of that information had to be submitted.
Not in recent memory, Seth, and that's one of the reasons, as Lori said, we are exploring potentially doing a smaller tranche first time around that would be sold to a bank.
And is it, is it fair to say that that first tranche should probably have a higher interest rate? As opposed to later tranches because there's so much unknowns surrounding the funding mechanism and how the district's going to operate?
Um, potentially, but it also is something that you may be able to minimize by shortening the term of the first tranche such that the implications of not having a credit rating and doing a private sale are minimized.
Detail I want to remind the board about is we've been very successful with Business Oregon. And we're in the preliminary engineering and design phase. And we actually have a couple of years of cash for our local match lined up. So again, the cash flow need in year one from bond proceeds is, um, relatively manageable.
So then if, if, if there's not a cash flow need, then explain the reasoning of why having the bond sale in May of twenty-four as opposed to November of twenty-four or May of twenty-five.
There is a cash flow need. It's just not a need to issue the entire amount of the bonds in year one.
And we did the electorate analysis. And again, I know that there's at least one member of the board who would like to see the bond outcome determined before we move forward with other steps of the process. So we think it's important. We also think it helps us with ongoing appropriations in Congress. So, uh, we're, we're, we're recommending we proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Eric.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to clarify the, the bond election date and the bond offering aren't tied together. I mean, we, if I'm understanding correctly, we could get voter approval in May. And then, you know, based on whatever other factors we're working on and other considerations, we might wait until September of, of next year to issue. And we might only issue maybe twenty-five thou- or twenty-five million in the first batch and then do another whatever amount might be projected to be needed, you know, in March of twenty twenty-five or something. But we're, we're not tied to issuance based on election date, correct?
Correct.
Exactly. And just to clarify, Seth, once you have an authorization, it's good indefinitely. So it is not at all unusual to sell in smaller chunks. It would be totally unusual. And I can't say I've ever seen a municipality try and get a bond rating prior to an election. If for no other reason than there's a cost associated with getting bond ratings. So ideally, you want to wait until you know for sure you have a bond. Porky?
Uh, it's a question for Lori because this is, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole here, but this is a really interesting strategy, it sounds like to me. If I'm hearing correctly, I think what Lori's saying is, uh, we get the GeoBond passed and then perhaps we can borrow against that, but not put that, uh, but not go out for the bonds yet. Is that, because I heard Jim say, yes, we need the cash, which I think is the case. But Lori's saying we don't need to start the GeoBonds just yet. So what do we do at that interim?
We're starting the GeoBonds. It's just a different method of issuance. So if you think back to the first slides that Carol was going through, you can do a public sale of the bonds or you can sell them privately to a bank. And if you sell them privately to a bank, you don't need to get that rating. And so we're looking at the cash flow for the bonds. And we do need cash in year one because on the PMLS side, we need money for real estate transactions. And those real estate transactions are what is tying the hands of the Army Corps for moving forward with their bids for their construction. So we have to finish the real estate transactions before they can go out for bid and start moving forward with the construction. So there is some cash flow timing needs. But what we're thinking strategically is because that ratings process is going to be challenging with a new district. And we want to really show them that we've got our financial processes in place, that we can really speak strongly about our revenue methodology and the cash flow related to the revenue is that we would look to, um, that different form of sale directly to a bank for that first piece. They would still be general obligation bonds. They would still be paid back by the taxpayers. But it's just a different process for selling because it, it will be a smaller amount. You couldn't sell a hundred and seventy-five million dollars worth of bonds to a bank because most banks don't have that capacity. But we can sell the piece that we need to be able to get started and keep going with those projects.
Thanks for the clarification. It sounds like a great strategy. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The other thing that we've talked about, um, and I've experienced is sometimes it helps with, if you can get your rating agencies to actually come out and see what you're doing and see what the project landscape looks like. So that might be something that we want to consider too, is to, to show them the great work that we're doing and how important it is to the community.
And you guys, I am very sorry, but I am realizing I am actually late for another meeting. Are there any crucial questions for me before I depart? I'm really sorry.
And if you guys have questions later, send them in and we'll get them answered for you. So this isn't the end of questions.
Thank, thank you, Carol. And yeah, um, we're a little late on our item to, um, to transition to our next one. So, but thank you for, for all this wonderful information. We'll collect, uh, additional questions from the board and get them answered. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, guys. See you soon.
Okay, well, up next, we've got, uh, Colin for a transition update. Colin, are you ready to go?
Yes, uh, ready to go. Thank you all. Uh, Colin Rowan, uh, Director of Planning Public Affairs, MCDD. And just wanted to give a quick update on some of the work, excuse me. Have some bad allergies. Okay, all good. Um, so just wanted to give a quick update on, uh, what all, uh, we've been up to since, uh, our last meeting, which was about a week and a half ago. And so staff has been busy working with a lot of you and, uh, different, um, partners in your agency. So I want to thank everyone for, uh, all of your quick replies as we've been, uh, working through the issues that the board raised. Uh, so just wanted to give a quick update and answer any questions. So one thing is that we have, uh, engaged with Next Strategies, uh, which, uh, is Reed Wagner's, um, policy advising company, uh, to provide some additional policy analysis on some of the legislative, um, modifications that we're considering, uh, wa- walking through, political and technical feasibility questions. So we should have, uh, a report back, uh, to you all, um, from that group, uh, at your next meeting. Um, and in order to get additional information, we've also have been, uh, working on some legal analysis related to that. So we've been working with Craig Ashford, um, who is at Miller Nash. And Craig is a public and municipal law expert and has been supporting us with analysis on some of the user fee proposals. Um, and sort of performing similar analysis that Jeff Condit had performed on, um, some of the other legislative modifications, the transfer of assessments in the flood safety benefit tax. Um, so we have some initial reports back from him. Um, and we'll be sharing that information with, uh, Next Strategy Solutions as well as, uh, with the board very soon. Uh, we're also, uh, working with all the municipal partners, um, especially around collections and feasibility of the collections on some of the user fee IDs, ideas. Uh, so we've been working with the county, reaching out to, uh, Department of Revenue uh, and, uh, trying to make contact with, uh, Department of Transportation uh, to get some analysis on, on these ideas that we'll be able to share with the board. Lori and her team have been doing, uh, financial analysis, uh, to sort of see what it would cost, uh, both the collections cost as well as a per customer, per user cost, uh, for that analysis. And then one other thing that came up at the meeting on the twenty-first was, uh, the question, especially for the legacy boards, which is really important for us to address around the transfer of assessments and indemnification of the legacy board members. Uh, and so we.
You muted yourself, Colin. Hey Colin, you're muted, sorry.
Are you able to hear me now?
Now, yeah.
I'm having all sorts of technical difficulties.
Right at the beginning of indemnification.
The best part, uh, you know, okay. The, uh, it's a really, um, important issue for us to, uh, work through, especially for the legacy board members. Transferring that assessment authority is also transferring some of the responsibilities associated with that. So we want to be really sure, uh, that, um, the legacy board members, the legacy districts themselves are indemnified, um, in that. And so working with Armand Resto Spotts, who was formerly Associate Counsel here at MCDD, um, he has, uh, entered into private practice and he's supporting us in working with, um, SDIC's Council Brian Sheets, um, to make sure that that's addressed. And we have, um, he's, he's been in touch with Brian Sheets and working out a solution that we'll be able to report back to this board, but importantly to, um, give updates and report back to the legacy boards. Uh, finally, we're working with, uh, Mark Landauer, who is our lobbyist, to bring together government relations staff for the, um, cities and jurisdictions that have government relations staff and then bringing in, uh, board members, uh, to, for any of the cities that don't have that staff, um, to go through the different proposals that are on the table and to discuss what the legislative path forward for any of those would look like. Um, and so we'll be having minutes taken at those meetings, um, so that we're able to share that with the board. We just want to ensure that there's a lot of transparency and that you all are aware of what those conversations are looking like. But that really is to come up with a viable legislative path forward for anything that we're considering. Um, and then there was, uh, part of the conversation last week was, uh, some really important notes, uh, around who would be taxed or the taxing authority. Um, and, uh, right now we have Jeff Condit and Craig Ashford over at Miller Nash working on, um, some of the ideas that, uh, Seth Reeser had highlighted and Wood Village had been talking with others about. Um, and so loo- looking to incorporate those into, um, any of the possible legislative modifications, especially on the flood safety benefit tax. So there are a lot of, uh, pokers in the fire there, um, but they're all going to be coming together, uh, to provide a, a similar analysis and, um, that will look at technical feasibility, financial feasibility as well as, uh, the political and legal, um, implementability of, uh, these different ideas. So with that, I'm going to stop just before going to questions. Just wanted to give, uh, Lori and Jim space if there is anything that I missed or any additional, um, context you'd like to add.
Thanks to the board for the direction at your previous meeting and we're working really hard to implement it. And if you have suggestions or particular people or things you'd like us to look at, I hope you'll let me know. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the responsiveness and, um, people really, uh, coming together to work through these things. Uh, Seth, your hand up was, uh, was, uh, was up first.
Yeah, uh, just a quick question. So the, um, I had kind of been working under the assumption that once, if the bonds go through in May and we get the operating revenue that this all winds down in June of twenty-four and kicks off with the new district in July of twenty-four. But then I had a question about what happens between the ti- I wanted to just see if that was correct. And then what happens in between the time when the, that dissolution happens and you actually get the election of board members the following November? Who's, who's on the board at that point?
Yeah, that's a great question. So right now, um, and it, it can reshare and I, I might be able to pull it up at least on the timeline. The goal right now is to have, uh, the board, the regular board. So that's the elected, uh, five members elected for designated by the governor, um, on the May twenty twenty-four, uh, ballot. And so we did go back to, uh, so if you take a look at ORS five fifty, um, on, uh, OLS, the, the state's legislative website, it doesn't incorporate the, the late, latest changes that were made during the twenty twenty-two session. Um, but we did, uh, oh, make some modifications that allow for that initial election to be on any ballot. So it doesn't have to be on odd years, uh, May ballot. Um, and so you are correct around the transition, uh, being for July of twenty twenty-four. Um, and so on that timeline, uh, the goal was to have this board, the initial board, um, pass a uh, budget that would be in June to have that as a transfer or, or basically a kind of a, a meeting with both that regular board and the initial board, um, to make sure that there's, uh, you know, continuity there and then to actually swear in or seat the, uh, regular board in July. And so there are, there might be some other legislative tweaks that might be needed, uh, to make that go forward. But that does allow for the transition, the, uh, transfer of the assessments, if that's the path that, um, goes forward, i- it allows for all those things to, um, happen that.
So, yeah, that answers the question. So just to be clear, so the current plan is we're going to be working on the GeoBond campaign for the May twenty twenty-four election with the current board. At the same time, the campaign to be on the new board is going to be on that same election.
That's good. Same, same ballot, correct? And, uh, this board, your board, the initial board, um, would be the one referring that GeoBond.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Uh, Mary Helen, you're next.
A couple of comments slash questions. Um, just to clarify again, what Seth just said, that the elected, um, new board is Corky Colored Prince Board, um, is on the ballot that goes to everyone that votes. So people in Wood Village who don't have, uh, any idea of who I am or who might represent the drainage, uh, pen two would vote. So if they wanted to get all Wood Village people, I, and Seth, I'm just using you because of your question. But, um, if they wanted to get all, um, people on the board and they all resided in Wood Village, okay, and Nancy just said all of Multnomah County within the USB. But if one pocket of people But if one pocket of people. Voted and other people didn't, and I don't know how ballots go, but how does that work? Because, and that leads into my other comment of when you were talking about who you were consulting with. And um, who was involved in the conversations? You kept referring to um, jurisdictions and government relations people. That doesn't include people like me who I don't have a, a title of government relations or jurisdictions. And so is there any way for I and the other citizen Drainings District representatives? Who are not employed by a jurisdiction um, to be involved in those conversations or to at least listen so that we're informed? Otherwise, we're just being told what other people are doing. And we represent a const- you know, I, I call it my constituents, but um, just in my neighborhood, there's. Not a, uh, seven hundred and fifty landowners, I think it's like two thousand people. And they're represented by city employees, but there's nobody representing their interest. And so how do you balance getting that information to people that are not um, connected to a jurisdiction? And don't get paid for attendance, all of those kinds of things.
Let me, let me try, let me do your first question about the election first. If you look at the statute, what you'll find is that four of the five elected members need to reside in, have a business in. Or have a written documented relationship with the business or a homeowner on the flood plain. So four of the five elected people have to have a connection to the flood plain. All of those flood plain oriented people are elected district wide. The fifth elected person does not need that, but will be elected district wide. And then the governor will appoint four members, one from the port of Portland, one with a experience in flood safety. One with an environmental background and one with a social justice background, I believe. I apologize if I don't have those memorized correctly.
Yeah.
Well, environmental justice. And I, I, I understood that, but if I got four of my, three of my neighbors. And we lobbied and got more votes than somebody in Pen One. Um. How does, how does that, because we live in the flood plain and we would get more votes than somebody that lives in um, SDIC. Or, you know, we could lobby that, we could, you know, uh.
Well, so, so the top.
Yeah, Eric's shaking his head, so how, how does that work?
The top vote getters for each of the five elected positions will win office. And everyone in the entire district will vote for each of the five elected offices. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're going to be one, we're going to be one district.
I understand that, but they could all come from my neighborhood and they wouldn't know i- if uh, it, SDIC, MCD. A Pen One are all going to, and Pen Two are all going to be one district, but all of the elected people could all live in Pen Two.
That's, that's, that's correct. And again, if that's the will of the voters, that's what would happen.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly because that could affect how people um, attempt to be elected.
Sure. And then in terms of your second question, one of the critical reasons we're working directly with the jurisdictional partners. And again, we have a commitment to transparency in the discussions about the legislative modifications. So we're planning minutes and we're inviting a few of the folks who don't have representatives there. But the reason we're working directly with the municipalities is because they're going to be required to collect the revenue for us. And so they have a particular interest. And then those representatives will come back to this board and this board who represents a broader swath of the public will ultimately approve that. But because we need to work through the technical and legal issues with our municipal partners, they really need to be at the table if we're going to be successful. But that meeting and those people alone can't approve the recon- revenue mechanism that will go both through this board. And all of you have to vote to approve it, not all of you, a majority. And then it goes to the people's legislature where representatives of the voters in the legislature will also consider the modifications. And we'll vote on them. So we will also publish minutes and, and other things so that all that information will be shared. But that's the logic for that approach, Mary Helen.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Colin or Jim? Thank you, Colin.
And I know it looks like Reed Wagner's here, Reed, I don't know whether you want to say anything, but I thought it might be worthwhile since we have one minute left.
Oh, Reed.
Well, thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm beaming in from the airport in Sacramento um, and learning a lot today. And I'll be in touch with uh, many of you to get your perspectives on things. So uh, appreciate being involved and look forward to working with, with the board and the team.
Excellent, thanks Reed. We're just about a time. Any last question, comment? All right, not seeing any.
Please let us know if you have additional questions, call, write, text, email. Uh, we're anxious to get you the information you require.
We're right on time, three o'clock. Um, this meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.